Hello, Maika Ko and good afternoon. Mahalo for joining us today in AEN's hearing. It's Monday, March 11th, 2024, and we're convened here in room 224 and also video conferencing, which includes the audio and video of remote participants. This is being streamed live on YouTube. And the unlikely event that this hearing is cut short for reasons, tech reasons or whatever, then the committee will reconvene to discuss any outstanding business on March 15th, that's Friday at 1:00 p.m. in room 224. And that's during AEN's time slot, and a public notice will be posted on the legislature's website. And because of our 90-minute time limit, your testimony will be limited to two minutes for all testifiers. And let's see, so we'll start off with HB 2104, HB 1, appropriate funds to support Hawaii Invasion Species Council to ensure its long-term viability and prevent future problems. First up is Department of Ag.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair member Dexter Kishida, Department of Agriculture. We stand on our comments and would like to further comment that this week HISC is pulling together a bunch of ISs and other supporting groups to discuss, or part of the discussion is around data capture. So as our comments state to do that, Chelsea is taking the lead on this. So appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Dexter. Chelsea Arnott from DLNR.
Aloha, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair Richards, Senator Rhodes, Chelsea Arnott on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources and also program support for our Hawaii Invasion Species Council. We'll stand on our written testimony and support. And just want to mention that the funding that goes through the Hawaii Invasion Species Council really supports a broad spectrum of projects working on invasive species prevention and management, from state agencies to the Invasive Species Committees, Hawaii Ant Lab. So it's a really critical source of funding. So appreciate the opportunity to provide testimony, and I'm around for any questions. Mahalo.
Brian Miomoto from Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. Brian Miomoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have our written testimony and support. I just wanted to make this committee aware that additional funding was not provided in the House budget, HB 1800, HB 1. So we would like this committee to consider in this bill, which is basically the only vehicle left, including $4.25 million, which is the amount that we're looking for for HIS, additional to their base of 5.25. Again, this is the only vehicle still alive. We would like to see it in the Senate budget as well. HIS plays a critical role. We have testified countless of bills on invasive species this year. We don't need to talk about how bad it is getting, how bad it is, and how bad it will get if we don't provide the proper resources to our agencies to combat invasive species. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we ask for your consideration of $4.25 million more for HIS.
Thank you, Brian. On Zoom, Stephanie Easley with C-Gaps.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee. My name is Stephanie Easley with the Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. You have our written testimony. We are in strong support of this bill and the work that HISC does. HISC, through their grant process, is able to leverage the funds they have to cover a variety of projects in the state. They're kind of like at the end of "It's a Wonderful Life", when he's saying, "Well, how much do you need? Like, what's the minimum you need? And we'll give you that, and then that." And it's able to fund, to use those seed funds to leverage other dollars and to fund projects that would otherwise not have that base grant funding. So we strongly support this bill, and we thank you for consideration of our testimony.
Thank you. Next is Yulalia Woodson from Nature Conservancy in support. If I call your name and you'd like to testify, please step forward. Guy Sellier with Hawaii Forest Industry Association in support. Wayne Tanaka in support from Sierra Club. Kehalani Lum from Waifu Land LLC in support. Beverly Heiser in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? I have a question for Chelsea. Chelsea, in the Department of Ag's testimony on February 12th before the House Ag Committee, they said, quote, "To be consistent with the goals of the inter-agency buyer security plan, data collected through HISC functions, awards, and by partners should be entered into a database, which the department has full access as it relates to survey and control actions so the department can coordinate regulatory response and control and research statewide. This data should be maintained in a state-standard GIS data platform, ESRI, ArcGIS." Your response?
Yeah, mahalo, Chair, for the question. Chelsea Arnott on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. And appreciate the comments provided by the Department of Agriculture around data sharing. It's a real challenging, complex process to standardize data across multiple agencies and organizations for multiple species. So HISC does track our funded projects' data. If they do spatial work, they go on the ground and they treat and survey certain invasive species. We do collect that information through GIS and spreadsheets, and that gets put into the legislative report every year. And that is also available for state agencies if they like to see it. Getting to what I feel is the comments made by the Department of Agriculture, when we get to species like little fire ant that are really multi-agency responses on each of the islands, we don't have a central database at this point. And we've already made motions to start doing that work with our partners and the Department of Agriculture through what we're calling our "data hui", and starting with little fire ants is really the starting species. So we're making moves to make sure we do have this central database that would probably be hosted through our GIS online, which most people have access to, or another system that a lot of our partner organizations are using. But it'll be with consultation from the Department of Agriculture of what the state agencies are comfortable with. Mahalo.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to our next measure. HB 2131, HB 2, appropriate funds for the Department of Ag to mitigate and control the spread of the two-lined spittlebug and to fund recovery efforts for areas affected by it. First up is Department of Ag.
Thank you, Dexter Kishida, Department of Agriculture. We stand on our testimony and support, and just wanted to also further comment that the funding for this is key because we, in a recent conversation with our ranchers, it really is two parts. That the two-lined spittlebug destroys the kukuyu and the grasses currently, but then a bunch of invasive weeds then pop up, which require even more mitigation. So if we can control the spittlebug from the, at the front end, we'll reduce the cost to both the farmer and the state in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea Arnott, DLNR.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Chelsea Arnott on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We'll stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. And then just emphasizing past testimony that this really is a contained pest right now. And if we don't add more resources to the actual management of two-lined spittlebug on the west side of Hawaii Island, this is going to become like a little fire ant issue, where we're asking for more and more resources year after year. So mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you. Parwin Grewal from UH.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard and Vice Chair Richards and the committee members. This is Parwinder Grewal, the new dean for the College of Tropical Agriculture and Human Resources, commonly known as CETA. And I stand on our written testimony in support. And we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Parwin. Next, Micah Munikata from Ulupono.
Chair, Ulupono will stand in testimony in strong support. Thank you.
Thank you, Micah. Brian Miomoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Brian Miomoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have our written testimony in support. We would just like to note or I request that 800,000 be appropriated. That was the amount in the original bill and in the companion bill. That was the amount requested, that's 800,000. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Hunter Hevelin from Hawaii Farmers Union.
Well, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Hunter Hevelin here on behalf of Hawaii Farmers Union, standing in for testimony.
Hunter, are you still there? Your mic went out.
Okay, I'm still here. Yeah, I was just saying, we'll stand on our written testimony.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Nicole Galassi from Hawaii Cattlemen's Council.
Thank you, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair Richards, Members of the Committee. Nicole Galassi, on behalf of the Hawaii Cattlemen's Council, we strongly support this bill. We know that invasive species are important to address. That's not the debate. The reason we're asking specifically for attention on the two-lined spittlebug is that this is one that affects both conservation goals and food production. The opportunity here, like Chelsea said, is that there is, it is currently contained in Kona. So we have the chance to keep it in check before it gets out of control. Those ranches in Kona, they've been investing a lot of time, a lot of money, into controlling this invasive species, and they need our help to keep it from getting worse and from spreading. Without this action, the two-lined spittlebug will devastate Hawaii's range lands and beef production. Let's look at this as a chance to be successful in stopping an invasive species from additional damage, which we know is very difficult. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Nicole. Stephanie Easley from C-Gaps.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Stephanie Easley with the Coordinating Group on Alien Pest Species. Just want to echo the testimony provided by Department of Ag, by HISC, and by the other testifiers. This is a circumstance where an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Not only is it important to the ranching industry, as Mr. Kishida mentioned, after the spittlebug destroys the grasses, then invasive species come in, and those would have to be dealt with and remediated. So this upwind expenditure will end up saving money in the end. Thank you for consideration of our testimony.
Thank you. Frances Brewer from Big Island Invasive Species Committee is in support. Guy Sellier, Hawaii Forest Industry Association in support. Larry Jeffs from Larry Jeffs Farms in support. Wayne Tanaka from Sierra Club in support. And also the following individuals are all in support. Janet Ashman, Chuck Shimer, Jimmy Greenwell, Beverly Heiser, Jaclyn Ambrose, Jimmy Gomes, Randy Cabral, Taylor Kellerman, Woody Child, Walter Bowyer, and Angela Angelica Malone. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 2131? Members, any questions? Yes, Senator Decoit.
Department of Ag, please. Dexter, thanks for beer. Dexter, how do you guys treat the spittlebug? What do you guys treat spittlebug?
You know, I can get the exact pesticide treatment, but there are some sprays that we do or we can use. Many times right now, the ranchers are taking that on themselves. And that's why this funding will really help to offset the cost of those treatments for our ranching community.
So you can only treat this with pesticides?
Taking away habitat might also be a great alternative option. Like I think you mentioned last week, the clear-cutting or a burnback type scenario. And I understand that's a sensitive issue right now with Lahaina. But under direct supervision with their counties, county fire departments, this might be another option to take care of this problem.
Sure. I'm just asking because, you know, I know that we've had two boxes being emptied. So, you know, I'm trying to figure out how do you combat this if we're going to empty the toolbox of tools?
Correct, and not going to be possible. And so that is some of the fear in additional pesticide restrictions, that while the department might be allowed in some of the carve-outs, again, ranchers are the ones that are treating today. And so they're not part of the department. So how does this work for that ranching community?
So you're saying that you guys will do the treatment and not the ranchers?
If this were to happen, we'd have to because we're the only ones that would be allowed to. But then I would be coming back for more staff because I have one guy that can do treatment on all of Big Island. And that's for noxious weeds, for pests. So nowhere near enough people if we were to do that. So that is why we do need the tools in the toolbox today.
So if we removed pesticides, what happens?
Decimation, decimation of our ranch lands specifically to this bill.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Question for Dexter. In your testimony, you said that you had a tentative agreement with the Florida Department of Ag to launch exploration for natural enemies. Correct. So if you're unable to get to the $100,000 that you're requesting for the research program, what happens to that tentative agreement? Is it power?
You know, we'd have to go back to the table to see how much free relationship building we can have with the university. Definitely sharing of knowledge, I think, will still happen. But there needs to be some direct funding for this project to test some of the biocontrol agents. And so that is where some of the funding will be necessary.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, I think Dexter, we're going to agree on this, but like all of these invasive species, and we're going to have comments from everybody, time-sensitive. If we let government go too slow, it may be wasted time. So I think we are in a time-sensitive, is that fair statement from your perspective?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Chelsea, could you come up, please? Just respond to my statement, my comments, please.
Yes, it's time-sensitive. We're at a tipping point with a lot of these species, like little fire ant, and two-lined spittlebug is one of them. And it feels like, yeah, that's under control because we don't see it across the islands, but it's not. And if you go to the actual ranchers, which we've done site visits, because we do fund some of the research that's being done by the University of Hawaii and Mark Thorne's lab over there, and seeing what these ranches are dealing with on a daily basis, and not even wanting us to come to their ranch because they're embarrassed of what's happened to their very flush kukuyu grass and other foraging grasses over there, being replaced by these woody horrible invasive species that they have to spend a lot of money and a lot of time managing with other pesticides that they haven't been able to use. So yes, it's a problem, and we've called it the silent invasion before because a lot of us in the public don't see it as a problem until it's at our doorstep. But it is at a lot of people's doorstep. We're just not aware of it, and two-lined spittlebug is one of those.
Okay, I remember you dealing with the so-called fireweed. Same deal. We had an opportunity when it was in a very small area. But since it wasn't a catastrophe yet, we didn't do anything until it became a catastrophe. So, okay, I appreciate those comments. Thank you, Chair.
Mahalo. Thank you. Next up is Hospital 2133, HB 1, establishes an invasive species grant pilot program to provide grants through DOA to individuals, businesses, and organizations for the eradication of invasive species improperly located in Hawaii that is owned by the individual business or organization. First up, Department of Ag.
The department stands in our case.
Thank you, Dexter. Chelsea Arnott.
Chair, the department will stand on their written testimony.
Thank you, Chelsea. Brian Miomoto.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Brian Miomoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. And I promise, Chair, I'll start standing on more testimony. I just wanted to add to the conversation on the previous bill. Absolutely, we support this bill 100%. Not only are invasive species damaging our farms and ranches, our fragile environment ecosystem, but they are costing the farmers and ranchers. So the more that they have to spend in addressing invasive species, the less time they really have to spend on growing the food, feed, fiber, fuel, and flora culture that we want in Hawaii. So to provide some resources for the invasive species that we need to stop. We need to stop talking about just managing and controlling and eradicate. We want to eradicate, as we discussed with the last bill on the possibility with the two-lined spittlebug. So again, all these invasive species bills are great. I think I reported to this committee the 2002 LRB report on what it would cost annually to manage invasive species is $50 million. My understanding is today's numbers would be $90 million. That is to address invasive species. If not, it is just going to be an endless cycle of trying to manage those that we have here while more and more come into the state of Hawaii. So again, we need to provide the resources. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next is Guy Sellier from Hawaii Forest Industry Association. Wayne in support, all of these are in support. Wayne Tanaka from Sierra Club. John Mitchell from Living Life Source Foundation. Kehalani Lum, Waifu Land LLC in support. Sherri Pollak and Beverly Heiser in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on 2133? Members, questions?
Just one, Chair.
Senator Decoit.
Dexter, please. So Dexter, have you guys received requests from farmers and ranchers? Actually, have you received requests for this type of assistance in the form of grants from individuals, businesses, and organizations for combating invasive species? And if so, how much would such a program like this cost?
You know, we have received requests. I haven't totaled the amount that's being requested. But even simply putting together a program for Hawaii Island to combat little fire ants there and control it there, I think a small program just for Hilo was going to cost us $200,000 was the estimate.
So what would a small program for invasive amina, for koki frogs, cost?
Oh, I'd have to get back to you on that one. Partly because the types of, the cost of even the citric acid that we currently use, the food-grade citric acid specifically, has skyrocketed over the last year, tripled or quadrupled in price. And so just with that cost alone, not to mention trekking to the more mountainous regions to control areas both in Palolo here or on Maui, I'd have to get back to you. I'd have to get with our invasive species committees and others who are also actively working on this.
So in order to Maui, we partnered with the county, and the county has purchased the citric acid. Or like farmers, in this case, the homeowners, have volunteered their times to help, you know, push back that area. I know it isn't as widespread yet as the Big Island. So, I mean, wouldn't it make more sense to suppress an area like that and then go backwards so that it doesn't keep spreading?
What we've, I know what we've done in Kauai is kind of circled them and then kind of squished them together and then to eradicate that way, and so similar.
So you think like the retaining, that retaining a wall would work? You literally put this retaining?
A barrier, a physical barrier, yeah, to do that.
Sorry, I was watching too much of Trump this morning. But, you know, the barrier.
Slightly different kind of wall. Maybe it is. I don't know.
Yeah. Do you think that would help? I mean?
It definitely could, just creating that physical barrier so they stop spreading further. Correct, correct. So that is one option. I don't know if I'd be calling that organization to see their specs, but we could definitely use.
The skill of entrepreneur. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next measure, HB 2134, HB 2, appropriate funds to establish grant specialist positions within the Department of Ag. First up, Department of Ag, Dexter.
Thank you, Dexter Kishida, Department of Agriculture. The department definitely supports this bill. And we are really thankful that one of the positions has made it into the House Finance Draft of the budget. We just see that the opportunity is great just with federal funds alone, that these positions would fund itself in a year in drawing down these both non-competitive and competitive federal funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Warren Watanabe from Mauna County Farm Bureau. In support, Micah Munikata, Ulupono.
Good afternoon, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair, Chair, and members of the committee. Micah Munikata here on behalf of Ulupono Initiative in strong support of this measure, Chair. You know, I came before this committee and gave a little bit of the data in the last, over the last month to really emphasize the importance of something so small. Department of Ag's asking for three positions at $300,000 in this bill. Dexter's right, the House did pass a position with $100,000 attached to it. We're hoping to add to more positions. You know, Dexter said one year before they pay themselves. I believe that's actually much less. I think, as described in a previous hearing, there's $14 million right now that's just available for the Department of Ag to go get. This is money that's set aside for state government agencies or departments to go and get. So $300,000, you know, investment to get $14 million just this year with the potential for future opportunities, that's, again, I've said this before, it's nearly 50 times return on investment in that first year. So I challenge DOA a little bit to say that it would actually be much better than that. The private sector has stepped up to try to help in different instances, but there's money that's available for government agencies to go get. This is DOA money. We just got to go get it. And that's where this bill comes in, and that's why it's super important to create the capacity within the Department of Ag. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, Michael. Brian Miomoto, Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. Brian Miomoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have our written testimony and support. I just wanted to follow up in saying that we understand that the legislature has very difficult decisions this year, fiscally because of Maui and other things, but mostly because of Maui. However, this is a mere ask. Again, the House draft asked for one position, $100,000. We'd like to see three positioned at $300,000. That $300,000 can be leveraged for millions so that we won't have to depend on the state for all of those millions of dollars that we hope to get from the federal government. We think it's a small cost for a huge investment for agriculture. So we do stand in strong support, understanding the difficult decisions that the legislature would have to make as far as budgetary items this year. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Young O with the Local Food Coalition. In support, Hunter Hevelin, Hawaii Farmers Union.
Thank you, Chair. Hunter Hevelin on behalf of Hawaii Farmers Union. We'll stand on our testimony in strong support of this measure. As we've seen over the past number of years, philanthropic entities and nonprofits have been able to be quite successful in bringing in funds to support our food and agricultural sectors. And we think it's a high time for government to learn from some private sector activities and adopt the same practice. Thank you.
Thank you, Hunter. Next is David Arkawa from Land Use Research Foundation in support, Nicole Galassi, Cattlemen's Council in support, Eric Tenoy from HFNA is in support, Ronald Whedenbach from the Aquaculture and Aquaponics Association in support, Caitlin Shimizu from Hawaii Food Policy Purple Maya Foundation in support, and the following individuals, all in support. Nancy Redfeather, Jaclyn Ambrose, Jay Ashman, Mark Phillipsen, Randy Cabral, Irene Ye, and Angelica Malone. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 2134? Members, any questions?
Yeah, Dexter. Deputy, how many grant writers do you have on staff right now? Deputy, how many grant writers do you have on staff right now?
Zero as a grant writer, to the point that Chair even has to take time out of after the regular workday to, to help the department apply.
Further questions?
So, sorry, Chair. So you got, you guys, how many positions you have open?
We do have 100 and.
No, 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 for grant writing.
Zero. We, we don't have a grant writer position.
You, or you guys don't even have one grant writer position?
Correct, that's what we're requesting.
Okay, message received. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, straightforward. Next up is HB 2136, HD2, requiring the Department of Ag to establish and implement a pesticide inspection program to increase compliance with the proper use of restricted use pesticides by agricultural producers, ensure the continued prohibition of use of pyrophos, and inform the public of the most recent pesticide inspection results for ag producers. First up, Department of Ag.
Thank you, Dexter Kishida, Department of Agriculture. The department stands in our comments, just wanted to point out a few things. One, I think as I shared last week, I, I fully appreciate that the department has a few roles that we play, and one of them is to protect consumers and the general public. And, and in this bill, that, that's really what it does. It helps, while we do have some of the authorities listed, this definitely emphasizes the fact that we need to protect our greater communities. And so that way, we, the responsible users can continue to control pests with, with the necessary tools. One thing that I would like to request a change in this bill is that our pesticide branch oversees all pesticide use, not just agricultural pesticide use. So to be fair and in line with what the EPA direction is, that we, all pesticide users be included instead of just agricultural users. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian Mewodo, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. Brian Mewodo here on behalf of Hawaii Farm Bureau. Chair, we do have Janet Ashman online. She testified on the Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Okay, thank you. Janet?
Aloha, Chair Gabbard, Vice Chair Richards and members of the committee. I'm Janet Ashman, testifying on behalf of Hawaii Farm Bureau. We respectfully offer these comments. First, I'm happy to point out that DOA already has a pesticide inspection program and implements it. Better, both federal and Hawaii state laws and regulations on pesticide use are exhaustive, and they carry enormous penalties and potential jail time for violations. Pesticide branch already conducts inspections in response to every complaint it receives, and it also periodically inspects all users of restricted use pesticides. Second, the bill raises questions of due process because it appears to require, as Dexter just said, the department to make public its investigations before they are concluded. It applies only to farmers' use of pesticides without any justification. It ignores all other users of pesticides such as termite and structural pest control, public health use, conservation use. And the DOA data on pesticide use violations does not justify singling out agriculture. I do want to point out one more thing, and that is that not even California, which has the most comprehensive pesticide reporting program in the world, requires this level of reporting. And California, of course, has significantly larger resources and a huge agricultural industry and significantly greater volume of pesticide use. In fact, California only produces an annual summary of information that can only be accessed by the public several years after the pesticides are applied. DOA doesn't have comparable resources. Farm Bureau believes that any additional funding allocated to the pesticide branch would be better spent to attract and retain qualified branch staff to fulfill its current responsibilities, including outreach and education, review and completion of new and safer registrations to keep up with new and more devastating pests, complaint response, inspections and enforcement. Thank you for your continued support of Hawaii's ag community.
Thank you, Janet. Hunter Heveland from Hawaii Farmers Union.
Thank you, Chair. Hunter Heveland here on behalf of Hawaii Farmers Union. We stand in support of the intent of this bill and would like to highlight some of the key measures. Well, pyrophos in particular had previously undergone a ban from the EPA that was subsequently overrode after significant changes in, I could say, the structure of our court system. We believe that the continued prohibition of that restricted use pesticide or that previously banned pesticide would signal the intentions of our agricultural industry and our state overall to privilege community protection and environmental health over, we could say, the shifting tides of political persuasions within our court system. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Hunter. Anne Frederick from Apa. In support, Chris Caulfield from the Democratic Party of Hawaii. In support, Danny Kupchoi from Hawaii Crop Improvement Association, his comments. Clayton Kubo on Zoom, Clayton?
Clayton Kubo, Hawaiian State of Hawaii. Please support this measure. I found out in the past that four companies denied inspection, and then later on I find out that, oh, their license can be taken away. So in the end, it's like, it's like this. All I want is for me is to not to get impacted. Okay, hey, they like spray, go ahead and go spray. But if they're going to be impacting me and my family, I don't think that's right. You know, it's like you guys, they always said to me in the past, oh, the label is the law. Okay? Well, it seems like they wasn't following the label because last year, the results came out and had 60, I think it was 65 pages of repeat offenders of pesticide violations. So in the end, you know, I heard it all for all those, what, now is 24 years. And, and I will reiterate, if they want to spray, go spray, but please do not impact me. Mahalo. Aloha.
Thank you, Clayton. And the following individuals are all in support. DA Lutnick, Jaclyn Ambrose, Keone Shizuma, Sherry Pollak and Beverly Hyzer. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 2136? Members, any questions?
Questions, please.
Senator Deco.
Dexter, to what extent do you guys already do what is called for in this bill?
You know, much of it we do. We do go out and inspect, and it's, it's through an EPA agreement that we, we are the ones tasked to, to ensure compliance with pesticide laws. This does codify it in, in HRS in a slightly, in another section very clearly.
As, as Mr. Kubo said, how many repeat offenders do you have?
I'd have to get the list. I believe he, what Clayton said in, in some prior testimony. You know what, I, I won't, I won't say the number because I don't know off, I don't know the, the exact number. I'll have to get back to you on how many repeat offenders.
And then is it, when you, when you get the list, can you separate out restricted use and other uses?
Most definitely.
Of violations?
Yep.
And then what would it cost? How much is it actually costing you guys now? And then what would it cost us in new money if the bill passes?
We don't expect any additional funding needed to implement the bill as written. Now, if, and, and actually with some of the, a bill that was passed last year that increases the fines, which goes into a revolving fund, that's one way that we could in the future also fund additional education and inspectors as needed. But the goal of that is really, it goes down, right? That through education with the community and, and users, that there would be no fines in the end.
Or there will be no fines in the end?
Because everybody will be using it like it should.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Sure. Senator Richards?
Some of the comments have been made is it should not just be for agriculture, it should be for all users. If that were the case, and you being the designated through EPA, how many positions do you have now? How many might that take? Which, and then what would be the economic cost?
The, the, again, we, we currently do respond to complaints as is and to, to the broad community, and that's why the alignment of the bill to include language to saying all pesticide users is, is, I think, needed in this. I do realize it opens up a different kind of worm to different industries as well, but my team already goes out during complaints or whenever there is a complaint to follow up and do an investigation. So we don't expect the need for additional funds yet.
Okay. Because this is human health, is this tied in? Do you work or have a working relationship with Department of Health? Is there a?
My branch manager came from Department of Health, so not only because of clean air and some other parts of DOH, but also just a great working relationship with his, his former team and, and others.
So we have that dash line between?
Absolutely.
Got it. Okay, thank you, thank you, Chair.
Chair, one more question?
Yes, sir.
For Hunter. Is Hunter on?
Yes, Senator.
Hi, Hunter. I, I noticed that you guys support this bill, but I also noticed you supported HB 2131 in regards to the spittle bug. I, I kind of question, you know, they're using pesticides there as well, so I'm kind of confused that you're supporting the HB 2131 relating to two-line spittle bug, and then you also support the compliance and proper use. So what, what is that?
Well, I would say, you know, we have a diverse membership and that there is a, a belief amongst, I would say some, that the, the application of agricultural chemicals, including pesticides, is a critical component of viable ag operations. But I think all would agree that transparency around use and effective regulation, particularly of restricted use pesticides or things that are banned mostly internationally and had previously been banned nationally, is, are, are important aspects of conserving not just environmental health, but.
So you agree with the transparency part, correct?
Yeah, and I, and I think in, in the case of, of the particular RUP that are previously banned, the pyrophos, that we would certainly be interested in constraining the use of that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Moving on to HB 2139, HD1, requires the Department of Ag to establish and implement invasive species inspection placard program to enhance the control, removal and eradication of invasive species on the premises of an ag producer and inform the public of the most recent invasive species inspection results for ag producers. First up, Department of Ag.
Thank you, Dexter Kishida, Department of Agriculture. The department respectfully opposes this measure. We support the intent. We know and, and really appreciate what the measure is trying to do. Just right now, the, the cost is going to be immense to create a program like this, a placarding program. And if we say we're going to mirror the Department of Health, it doesn't quite align line by line because Department of Health governs areas that can be very controlled and, and our farms are not. And so in it, and, and so if we're going to do a placard system of a red, yellow, green or something similar, due to the variables, we're going to need not only inspection staff to go out for invasive or for infestations, but also according to statute, our job will be to also to help them solve this problem. So also treatment staff will need to be increased. And I, um, thank you very much for the, for giving us the time to testify, and I'll be here for any questions.
Thank you. Chelsea Arnon, Illinois.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Chelsea Arnon on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources and program support for our Hawaii Invasive Species Council. The department stands on its testimony providing comments. We do support the placard program and, you know, tools that can help us mitigate the spread of invasive species like little fire ant and coconut rhinoceros beetle. Our comments are based on just the broad sweep of agricultural producers and really wanting to narrow the focus down on what we know of, of the high-risk pathways like the horticulture trade. So mahalo for the opportunity. I'm around for any questions.
Thank you. Brian Mewodo, Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Mewodo here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We submitted testimony providing comments. Again, we support any efforts to address invasive species. We applaud the introducer of this measure, to come up with a, a program that, that maybe they think may help. However, we're concerned with the practical nature of this program. We talked about spittle bug. How do we contain spittle bug like this placard system proposes do, like with restaurants? Restaurants are enclosed. They, the placard system based on temperature control and other foodborne illness or food safety issues. How do we do that with farms and ranches that are wide open? How to prevent, if we are mitigating on our ranch or farm, it from coming back on? How do we get rid of that red, yellow and get back to the green? Again, this is way different than a restaurant. A restaurant's a lot easier to, to manage a placard system. Restaurants do need to register with the State Department of Health in order to become a restaurant. We don't know how this will be executed and implemented. It just doesn't seem like it's, it's possible. And again, it's addressing only the farmers and ranchers, we believe. But you could have a farm and you could do whatever you need to do to, to address the invasive species on your property, your next door neighbor doesn't, and then it comes back, and then now you're back in the red. So again, we do have concerns. We do appreciate any effort to address invasive species. We just don't think a placard system is, is going to do the job. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Brian. Stephanie Easley, Cgaps. You're on mute, Stephanie.
Thank you. Sorry, having some mic trouble. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Stephanie Easley with the coordinating group on alien pest species. We'll stand on our written testimony echoing the comments of the previous three testifiers that this year with the budget, you know, there's not going to be much money. We need to target the highest risk pathways, which is the nursery trade potentially, other pathways that really will spread the pests rapidly around the islands. Thank you for consideration of our testimony.
Thank you. Hunter Heveland with Hawaii Farmers Union.
Thank you, Chair. Hunter Heveland here on behalf of Hawaii Farmers Union. We will reiterate our written comments noting the considerable issues with this bill as written. While we support the intent of obviously controlling invasive species, we would like to see the efforts directed to the vector that many of the prior testifiers have, have noted. Would add that as, as written, it could be interpreted to me that a agricultural operation would not be able to remove its, its red placard, for example, in the absence of actually eradicating all invasive species on the parcel, which other land managers, namely the conservation industry, I think it attests is a very tall order. And so unless we want to see our, our rural and farm communities covered with a red sea, I would say that we'd succeed see this covered. Thank you.
Wayne Tanaka, Sierra Club in support. Jaclyn Ambrose in support. Sherry Pollak in support. Beverly Hyzer in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Any questions, members?
Quick, some quick questions.
Senator Deco.
Dexter, please. Dexter, help me understand, how would a placard program help us enhance the control and removal and eradication of invasive species on the premises of an ag producer?
Great question. I think it, the placard really just provides the transparency to the consumer that they're purchasing or not purchasing, because there might be a quarantine on the, on the farm, a possibly infected or, or a, from a place that is possibly infected or infect, infested, sorry. And so in that way, it limits the spread because people won't move product off of that farm. But it doesn't necessarily mean it squashes the infestation on site.
Thank you.
Chair, a quick follow-up. Yeah, thanks Dexter. Remember on the Big Island, I think it was bunchy top bananas, and we had all these signs go up and people wondered what the signs meant. And so I kind of see this as the same way in committing resources to something like this.
It's going to be immense resources for the outcome may not match what goes in.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, because I know those signs didn't do anything. So, okay, thank you, Chair.
Next is HB 2390, HD2, requiring the PUC to explicitly consider the effect of the state's reliance on fossil fuels on life cycle greenhouse gas emissions, and gives the PUC the discretion to require a life cycle greenhouse gas emissions assessment for energy projects that do not involve combustion fuel. First up is Michelangelo with ECCA.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Mickey Knox. I'm the Staff Attorney for the Division of Consumer Advocacy. I just briefly wanted to explain our testimony. We do support this bill. However, in the last round of amendments, we think we might have spotted a potential loophole where it may put gas utility projects into this new discretionary bucket. So we've offered some further amendments on the language. We've offered two versions. I wanted to explain that, too. We just, we don't know quite what the scope that you'd like to have in this new discretionary bucket, but the through line between those two versions of amendments that we're suggesting is to keep the calibration of this new discretionary bucket of projects in that new language. We think the potential problem might have been because the last round of amendments put a qualifier on the general case, and that's what might create a possible loophole for gas utility projects. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Next is Hawaii State Energy Office.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair members of the committee, Monique Schaefer, Decarbonization Program Manager for the Hawaii State Energy Office. Uh, we stand on our testimony in strong support. Uh, I do believe that language should remain as is and, um, I want to thank you guys for adopting our recommending, recommended language in the last iteration, uh, available for any questions. Mahalo.
Thank you. Leo Asunshion from the PUC.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Leo Asunshion, uh, Chair of the Public Utilities Commission, uh, will stand on our written testimony in strong support of the bill. Uh, this is something that, uh, we have been working on through a number of years now, uh, getting to the point of almost requiring every project that comes before us, uh, to have a greenhouse gas analysis done. Uh, we, we went back and took a look at the original intent. Uh, it was a, that was at a time when we were trying to encourage more renewable resources, which anecdotally, if you will, uh, does reduce greenhouse gases, right? Getting away from fossil fuel and the use of that. Uh, so, but we've gotten to the point now that even a solar project will require a greenhouse gas analysis, which does cost the developer money, does cost Hawaiian Electric money and from a project standpoint, right? That ultimately ends up, uh, being borne, the cost of that is being borne by the rate payer because it passes all the way through. So we're looking for the flexibility, uh, to decide, uh, have the commission decide and take a look at whether or not, and the bill does limit it to, if the, if, if there is burning of fuel, then it would be required, but if it doesn't require, right, it's generation being generate, a project generating energy, uh, from, uh, non-combustible or non-fuel sources, right, that we would then decide whether or not a greenhouse gas analysis would be necessary. Uh, wanted to touch upon a little bit about, um, the testimony from the consumer advocate. I think we can work with the consumer advocate on that. I did, I, I did read the testimony, um, just off the cuff, uh, just looking at it, I'm okay with either one of their amendments. Uh, we just have to figure out which one would probably work the best and the intent was not to, uh, put, you know, the, the gas company, should they come into us with a project that they have, right, to suddenly exempt them, if you will, from a greenhouse gas analysis. I think, yeah.
Thank you so much. Next is Leah Laramie, the State Hawaii Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission.
Aloha Vice Chair, Chair, members of the committee, Leah Laramie, the Climate Change Mitigation and Adaptation Commission. Um, we stand in support of this bill and you have our testimony if you have any questions. I'm available. Mahalo.
Thank you Leah. Henry Curtis. In support, James Abraham with Hawaiian Electric.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is James Abraham, I'm testifying on behalf of Hawaiian Electric in strong support of House Bill 2390 HD2. We believe the current bill language identifies the correct scope for the greenhouse gas analysis and will stand on our written testimony in support. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Frederick Rudell from the Hawaii Clean Power Alliance. In support, Jacqueline Ambrose in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 2390? Members, any questions?
Senator Rhodes for, um, Climate Change and Adaptation Commission. So at this point then, I, sometimes these, uh, sometimes what's green and what's not is not entirely intuitive. So do we have enough data at this point to say that certain kinds of projects, if they, they are just sort of automatically green?
I think it's really case by case basis on how they go through the lifecycle, which is why these analyses are really important because there are certain projects, let's say biofuels, where, you know, the processes are maintaining the land of regenerative, they're not bringing imports out from, you know, other places, um, to produce these things and then they're capturing, um, any emissions and, um, not letting those go out into the atmosphere, um, whereas others could have a lot of inputs. So it would really.
So requiring the PUC to do the lifetime, the, um, the life cycle greenhouse gas emissions analysis, that you view that as more sufficient to be sure that we're not getting greenwashed?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you. Thanks Chair.
All right, moving on to HB 2590, HD1. Appropriates funds for food bank purchases from local farmers to be expended by Department of Ag due to request for proposals. Department of Ag. Thank you Dexter. Edison Blue Son, Council Member from Kauai, in support. Micah Munikata, Ulupona.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Micah Munikata here on behalf of Ulupona Initiative, uh, in strong support of this measure Chair. Um, a lot of great, uh, collaboration between our, our community feeding efforts, um, emergency community feeding efforts to the food banks and our local farming community. Um, I think I've testified with this, this stat before, actually more on the value added side, but I think it's relevant here, that farmers, um, experience about 10 to 40% of wasted products and that's just the nature of what can go to market and what can't. If we find an additional market for that, we are supporting our local producer and providing for community feeding efforts across the state. It's a very important measure for our farmers, as are our whole bunch, but I think that this is also one of those bills where it's that triple win of keeping money here locally, uh, supporting our farmers with additional markets and then also feeding the, the food insecure, which are continuing to be present here within our communities. Thank you very much Chair.
Thank you. Amy Miller from Hawaii Food Bank.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Amy Miller here with Hawaii Food Bank. We stand on our written testimony in strong support of this bill. As Micah said, we see this as a real win-win. Every dollar does double duty, both helping support our local farmers and getting food to those we serve. If I may, I'd like to just read an email we received from a participant in one of these programs. And she says, "I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart to whoever started this program. I have three kids aged six, two and one and work two jobs and therefore do not qualify for food stamps. After monthly expenses for rent, gas, electric and diapers, it leaves very little for food. I go to food banks to make ends meet. This program literally changed our lives. It changed the way we eat. I made so many amazing dishes using the fresh vegetables we are gifted with. I've truly never felt healthier. I made smoothies for my family every day. My babies would eat poi and cereal every morning. My middle son finally gained weight. After being denied any assistance for so long, finally I qualified for some sort of help and it's just the biggest relief to have that help be such healthy and wholesome foods. Thank you all from the bottom of my heart. I hope this program continues or others like it because it really has made such a difference in my family's health and well-being." Aloha. Thank you. I'm here to answer any questions.
Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farmer.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We're in strong support of this measure. Uh, and there's no question or no doubt on the merits of this program and the great work that our food banks are doing across the state. I would just like to note Chair, that, uh, again, the House draft of 18, HB 1800, uh, did not include, uh, any funding for the food bank. The original request from the administration was $7200,000. Uh, the governor did send out a GM, GM5, asking for additional support or to add, uh, a $1.28 million to make it a $2 million request for the admin budget. However, that request did come down a little late and ultimately the House did not even include the 720, they did not concur. So we are humbly and respectfully asking for at least $2 million for this program. I believe, uh, previous requests were up to $5 million. Uh, again, you heard win, 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 win. It's a win all the way around. Uh, so we do respectfully ask that this committee consider, uh, appropriate at a minimum $2 million for the Farm to Food Bank program. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you Brian. Hunter Heveland, Hawaii Farmers Union.
Thank you Chair. Hunter Heveland on behalf of Hawaii Farmers Union will testify in strong support of this measure, uh, one that we have advocated for over the past number of years and would direct, uh, readers to the, the second page of our testimony, which highlights, I think, a few important, uh, amendments that would better protect and, and place this program as, as a permanent one within the Department of Agriculture. Alternative versions of the bill within previous years and, uh, in, during this session, namely HB 2137, would have, uh, placed the program in statute as opposed to just a single year of funding, which we think is of critical importance, that this is not just a reaction to behind of, but a, a critical and sustained need both in our communities and one that can continue to support our agricultural development. Additional aspects would highlight that not only this funding could be used not just for the purchase of food, but also for the other costs incurred by food banks, which the, uh, amendments I offer would also define, um, as well as allowing for funding to be utilized for the transportation and storage of these local products, as well as, uh, I think finally conceivably using a system similar to that used by the Department of Labor, Office of Community Services, which uses the Emergency Food Assistance Program and their allocation of resources by county as a mechanism to determine which, uh, you know, the amounts that would go to a given food bank as defined by US Code. That would reduce the, uh, administrative burden on the Department of Agriculture, which currently could put things to RFP and the absence of any definition of the food bank currently in the bill would conceivably have the onslaught of the hundreds of amazing , um, community feeding operations, errantly spend their time in application for this. So we seek to streamline and to embed this in statute. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Nate Hicks from Hawaii Public Health Institute.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Nate Hicks, Hawaii Public Health Institute, uh, support, uh, we stand in support of this bill and want to highlight how important fresh produce is for the health of all of us, uh, including and very importantly, our low-income residents who depend on the food bank system for a lot of their food. Uh, you can go to a lot of these food pantries, uh, and the lines for those that include fresh produce as part of their giveaway are huge, hours-long lines, uh, just for people waiting to get this fresh produce. That's not the same situation for the, uh, food pantries that don't offer the fresh produce. It's in high demand, uh, families really do need this and this bill will allow more families, uh, more variety and more options to choose from, uh, when it comes to fresh produce. Mahalo.
Thank you Nate. Jay Anna from Young Brothers in support, Sherry Pollack in support, Cole Wu from the Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks in support. All of the following in support, Sylvia Delena from Pele Lani Farm, Kristen Albrecht from the Food Basket Inc., Hawaii Irons Food Bank in support, Susan Roberts Emery in support, Emmy Matsura, Keoku Rilits, Non Karisu. All in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? Oh, yes, and there are more. Caitlin Shinisu from the Hawaii Food Policy Purple Maya Foundation, Lauren Zerville, she here, from Hawaii Food Industry Association. Chamber of Commerce of, uh, Chamber of Sustainable Commerce in support. And also Stephanie Austin, Nancy Redfeather, Marilyn Nick, Lorna Holmes, Roger Val Raven, Jacqueline Ambrose, BA Plintock, Irina Bliss, Kiala Fung, Ariel Starbright, Dennis O'Shea, Tricia Blair, Edward De Dale, Menea Low, Thomas Brandt, Ali Hayman, Susan Douglas, Danielle Gruyong, Stancy Alapi, Janice Alma Glenni, Richard, Charla David Tevis, Gwen Rodriguez, Shannon Rudolph, Nahilani Parsons, Kiani Otsuka, Emily Garland, Michelle Nehipali, Timothy Wiley, Sherry Fow and Patty Artista Brockus, all in support. Yes, there were 50 in support and none opposed. So any questions members? Moving on then to HB 2619, relating to ag biosecurity. Appropriates funds for the biosecurity program of the Department of Ag to develop and implement projects for clean plant material, ag treatments, diagnostics and pest management. First up, Department of Ag.
Thank you Dexter Kishida, Department of Agriculture. The department stands on our testimony in strong support. Um, and the original request being 2.5 million, uh, we realize that this is not the year to go in for 20, though that would be great, um, for future years, but we just know that the added capacity that this bill provides would definitely strengthen our work on invasive species or against invasive species. Thank you.
Thank you. Chelsea Arnott from DLRN.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Chelsea Arnott on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources and program support for our Hawaii Invasive Species Council. Uh, the department stands on its written testimony in support and I just want to highlight the importance of biosecurity and really focusing efforts at our ports of entry and there's so many pests on the horizon that we don't even know about and just adding more funding to build up capacity at the Department of Agriculture. I mean, they're our first line of defense against something like Africanized honeybees or red imported fire ant, these major pests coming in. And of course, there's a whole heap of invasive plants out there that we don't have. So this is really needed and timely for the Department of Agriculture. So mahalo for the opportunity.
Thank you Chelsea. Mayor Richard Bisson in support from Maui, Warren Watsonabe from Maui County Farm Bureau in support, Hunter Heveland, Hawaii Farm Bureau, Hawaii Farmers Union.
Thank you Chair, uh, will stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Micah Munikata from Ulupona.
Good afternoon Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Micah Munikata here on behalf of Ulupona Initiative, in strong support of this measure. It's refreshing to see a bill like this, which is a holistic approach at, uh, addressing invasive species, um, you know, providing the resources necessary for the Department of Ag to do its work is going to be extremely important. Um, you know, we can listen to each invasive species bill with every pest that's out there. Um, in reality, we need to give the tools and the funding to Department of Ag to deal with all the various ones that we currently have and that are on the horizon as discussed with previous testifiers. So giving that resource and that flexibility for DOA to really address things in the moment and not having to come here every session and tell you about every pest that's come up is going to be very important. It'll make it a lot more efficient and it's a great use of funding. Thank you very much Chair.
Thank you Micah. Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of Hawaii Farm Bureau and apparently Hunter Heveland, honorary member of the Farm Bureau. We're in strong support of this measure. Uh, the biosecurity program is critically important. Funding for DOA is critically important, uh, to prevent more invasive species from coming in. We need to stop the cycle. Uh, we agree with, uh, Hiss with Ms. Arnott about the importance of protecting our ports of entry. Today's hearing, there's 12 bills, seven of them are specific to invasive species. That's how bad of an issue or a problem it is for not just agriculture, but for entire state. We would like the legislature to at some point consider quite possibly creating a division of invasive species, not a new department. I think those, there'd been some discussion about that, but maybe within the Department of Agriculture, it's own division of invasive species. I think the problem's gotten so big that warrants, uh, more dedication to prevent, control, eradicate all of the above for invasive species. So we are in strong support of this measure. Again, understanding the challenges of this year's budget, um, uh, 2.5 was the original request, as a deputy said. Uh, I think in finance it went up to 20 million was the request. Uh, in-house agriculture, when the Farm Bureau was asked the amount that we should put into the appropriation, we actually said 90 million. We're going to hold that line where if that's what, uh, the legislature's own report said, then that's what we should be advocating for. We should ask for what it takes to address invasive species, uh, but we are realistic. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you Brian. David Arakawa from LRF in support, Danny Kup Choi. Danny Kup Choi from Hawaii Crop Improvement Association in support. And all the following are in support. The Cattlemen's Council, Nicole Galase, Nancy Redfeather with Kaohana Onapua, Eric Tenoy with HFNA, Guy Selyer with Hawaii Forest Industry Association, Larry Jeffs from Larry Jeffs Farm, Arnold Wiedenbach from the Hawaii Aquaculture and Aquapunks Association, and the following individuals, John Gordinas, Jacqueline Ambrose, Jay Ashman, Eileen Yay, Randy Cabral, and Angelica Malone. Anyone else wishing to testify on HB 2619? Members, any questions? Senator Richards.
Thanks. Dexter and Chelsea, because I don't know who's going to answer this.
Chelsea will. What's that?
Or not.
I've heard it before.
Dexter Arnott, is that what you said? Question on the serious side. What's the estimate of number of invasive species each year coming into our state? Do you have an estimate on that?
So aloha, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for that question. Chelsea Arnott on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. The best estimate that we have where there was a holistic approach to inspections taken was a Kahului assessment in 2002, where Department of Agriculture did 100% inspections at the airport when they were doing airport improvements. And out of that report came that there's at least one new plant disease or insect being introduced to the state every year, and that's at Kahului Airport. That's not even our main hub of transportation. So if we did something like that, they call them bio blitzes, and did this 100% inspection at our Honolulu Airport, that number would be grossly larger than one new insect and plant disease every day. That's just a huge number.
Every day or every?
Sorry, every day. It's every day. I apologize.
Every day.
Every day, yes. And no, it is. And I'm happy to share that report with the committee so you can review it because it does break down what they found during that assessment.
Yeah. I'd ask then if you could send it to the Chair, then he can.
Of course. Yes.
So thank you. Appreciate that.
Quick question. So Dexter, so the purpose of the bill is to appropriate funds for biosecurity program of the department to development implement projects to increase local ag production and to lessen the entry of pests and prohibited or restricted organisms without a permit brought into the state on imported ag goods. What kind of projects would you develop and implement, and how much would this program cost us?
So the 2.5 million actually funds a few things, something that with the program that Chelsea just mentioned, it's time for us to do it again. This is a while ago, and to do it more than just at Kahului, to do this across the, on every island. The other piece that'll fund, as you said, is the product replacement, is identifying what are the products through these blitzes that are coming in hot? And let's stop bringing those in and grow that here or raise that here and really help incentivize the industry to make those changes to do that. So that's the two parts that we're working, the primary two parts that we're working on in the 2.5 mil.
So it's 2.5 total or?
Total.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. HB 2546, HD1, requires for the use of fine mesh nets for the protection of plants against invasive species. Requires the Department of Ag to establish a registration program for purchasers of fine mesh nets in the state. First up, Department of Ag. Chelsea Arnott from DLNR.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, Senator Rhodes, Chelsea Arnott on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand on our written testimony in support. We really need more tools in the toolbox for coconut rhinoceros beetle management, especially here on Oahu, where we're really past eradication and we're just working at containment. And we need our community members just to have some more tools that they can use to manage coconut rhinoceros beetle on their properties. Right now, there's pesticides that have restrictions on where and how they can use them, also using drones to treat the crowns of the trees. So we just don't have great, easy-to-use tools. These mesh nets could be one of those tools we can give to community members, but also just wanting to make sure that it's not so restrictive. I do understand Department of Agriculture's testimony in that it could be considered restricted for pest use, and there are other users of mesh nets well beyond what is for pest control. So just making sure we're not being too restrictive for our fishermen and fisherwomen and all the other agricultural uses of mesh nets. Mahalo.
Thank you. Brian Maimoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Hawaii Farm Bureau. We stand in support.
Thank you. Keopu Relitz, Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Kaylee Nixon. I am standing in for Keopu Relitz. The Office of Hawaiian Affairs will stand on our written testimony, and thank you for the opportunity.
That's in support. Gina Gregory, there's comments, and the following are all, no, that's 25, no. Jacqueline Ambrose is in support. Anyone else wishing to testify? Please.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I apologize for our late testimony. My name is Ian Ross, and I'm testifying behalf of the Y and I Coast Conference of Health Center. We are in strong support of this measure, and I believe, as we were hearing from other testifiers, we see this as another tool in the toolbox that can be deployed by the community to be proactive, supporting coconut trees, especially against the coconut rhinoceros beetle. I often get asked, what interest does the Y and I Coast Conference of Health Center have in this issue? Well, we look at this as a comprehensive health issue, and supporting the ecology, the local food systems, and the culture of the native Hawaiian peoples goes very in line with our view of comprehensive health and protecting the culture. We've taken the proactive move of actually starting the largest coconut nursery in the state. We're aiming for 1,200 trees with diverse lineages to protect the future of these trees. We already use nets, but we're not able to use the fine mesh nets, and that means we're always having to go up and deal with them as these problems come up with the coconut rhinoceros beetles attacking the crown of the coconut trees. And we just believe this additional tool could be readily deployed to make things a lot easier and to continue the vision of what we're attempting to do to protect these trees. I'll also add that we see this as tying in very much with our mission with public health, and we employ the Chair and members of the committee to vote favorably in this measure, and we thank you very much for this opportunity to testify in strong support.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Members, any questions? Moving on, HB 2644 relating to little fire ants. Appropriates funds to support the Hawaii Ant Lab in mitigating the effects of little fire ants in the state. First up, Chelsea Arnott.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Chelsea Arnott on behalf of the Department of Land and Natural Resources and program support for our Hawaii Invasive Species Council. I mean, I feel like this legislative session is just little fire ants. There's so many bills out there currently looking at how to address little fire ants, and definitely the number one issue is we need more funding. We need more resources so we can have more bodies on the ground doing the management of little fire ant, especially on these islands where we're just seeing a huge explosion of infestations, not only here on Oahu, but also on Kauai and on Maui. And we also need ongoing management for Hawaii Island and being able to have extension services to really support those farms and agricultural producers on how to manage it on their property. We have the treatment methods, we have the survey methods, they're effective, we just don't have the people to be able to implement them across the state. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Department of Ag. Brian Maimoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand in support.
Thank you. Stephanie Easley from Sea Gaps.
Stephanie Easley, good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Member of the Committee. My name is Stephanie Easley with Sea Gaps. Will stand on our testimony in strong support of the funding.
Thank you, Stephanie. Hunter Heveland, Hawaii Farmers Union.
Thank you, Chair. Will stand on our testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you. And also, the following are all in support. Nancy Redfeather, Kaohana Onapua, Tim Lyons from the Subcontractors Association of Hawaii, Frances Brewer from Big Island Invasive Species Committee, Wayne Tanaka from Sierra Club, Jacqueline Ambrose, Jay Ashman, and Beverly Heizer. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, any questions?
Yeah, just one for Chelsea. Chelsea, Chelsea, there's no money, no appropriation amount specified. How much will you guys need to support the Hawaii?
So for the Hawaii Ant Lab, we are looking at around 1.6 million is the ask to fully support that program currently as its staff, but also increase it by seven positions. And this is in conversations with the manager from the Hawaii Ant Lab.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Finally, on HB 2337, the last measure on this agenda, replaces representatives from the sugar and pineapple industries with representatives of the coffee and diversified ag industries on the Advisory Committee on Pesticides. First up is the AG's office.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Kelsey Nagata, Deputy Attorney General, providing comments on HB 2337, HD1. We just wanted to note that some technical revisions in HD1 could be misconstrued currently, sorry, the bill language as it stands now states that, or could be construed to require that one member of the advisory group be considered a citizen group and a landscape professional rather than two separate members. So we've provided some recommendations in our written testimony. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Parvind Agrewal from CTR.
Thank you, Chairman Gabard. Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. We stand in full support of this measure, and this is Parvind Agrewal's seat already here for answering any questions.
Thank you. Department of Ag.
Thank you, Dexter Kishida, Department of Agriculture. This is where definitely punctuation makes a difference. So if we could make those attorney general changes, that is much appreciated, as well as the reason for this is we just need to update. While there are pineapple and sugarcane growers still in Hawaii, we really feel that we can put them into the diversified ag component of, or seat on this advisory committee. Thank you very much.
Okay. Brian Maimoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Chair. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand in strong support of that.
Hunter Heveland, Hawaii Farmers Union.
Chair, Hunter Heveland on behalf of Hawaii Farmers Union. We stand in support of this measure and all of those who plum the depths of our statutes to identify some of the appendices that might need to be updated or excised. We do request a friendly amendment that the government seek parity in the voice of agriculture that is represented in this body, and that the Hawaii Farmers Union is also seeking a seat on this advisory committee. Happy to answer any questions, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Ann Frederick with HAPA in support. Keopu Relitz, Odegnie from Oha. Thank you. Jacqueline Ambrose is in support. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Members, any questions? Okay, let's take a brief recess, do some decision-making. Reconvening, the 1 o'clock AEM hearing. We've done collaboration with the committee. Let's go through the measures here, starting off with HB 2104 relating to the Hawaii Invasive Species Council. Chair's recommendation on this one will be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
Thank you, Chair, on 2104, as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor. Motion is adopted.
Thank you, members. HB 2131, two-line spittlebug. Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
2131, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor. Motion is adopted.
Thank you, members. On HB 2133, related to invasive species, the Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. We'd like to add koki frogs in our committee report. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
On 2133, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat. Chair, you have five in favor. Motion adopted.
Thank you, members. On HB 2134, relating to the grant specialist positions in Department of Ag, which by the way had a nice article in today's Civil Beat pushing this, so, where'd that come from? Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
On 2134, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor. Motion adopted.
Thank you, members. And then on HB 2136, relating to ag and pesticide inspection program, the Chair's recommendation will be to amend, using the amendments from the Department of Ag. Any discussion? Chair votes aye. Pass with amendments.
On 2136, pass with amendment. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor. Motion adopted.
Thank you, members. On HB 2139, HD1, requiring the Department of Ag to establish an Invasive Species and Placard program. This does have a defective date, so there's some controversy on this, and the Chair is going to go ahead and recommend to pass this as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
On 2139, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair's going to vote with reservations. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor. Motion is adopted.
Thank you, members. On HB 2390, on the requiring it, TUC, to explicitly consider the effect of the state's reliance on fossil fuels, on life cycle greenhouse gas emissions, Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
On 2390, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor. Motion adopted.
Thank you, members. On HB 2590, on the food bank, appropriating funds for food bank purchases, the Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
On 2590, Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Chair, five in favor. Motion is adopted.
Thank you, members. HB 2619, on the biosecurity program for Department of Ag to develop, Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
On 2619, pass as is. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Motion is adopted. You have five in favor.
Thank you, members. On HB 2546, on the fine mesh nets for the protection of plants against invasive species, Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
On 2546, pass unamended. Chair votes aye. Vice Chair votes aye. Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Awat.
Aye.
Chair, five in favor. Motion adopted.
Thank you. And then on HB 2644 relating to. And then on HB 2644, relating to little fire ants, Chair's recommendation will be to pass as is, noting in the committee report, the HDOAs request for the creation of an exempt entomologist position within the Plant Pest Control Branch of HDOAS. Number one, number two, also that the HDOAS supports the development of new facilities for the Plant Pest Control Branch. And three, HDOAS requests funding to support the Hawaii Ant Lab in partnership with the Plant Pest Control Branch. All that in the committee report. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
Chair verifying, pass unamended. Is that correct?
That's correct. That was in the committee report.
Pass unamended on 2644. Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Owa.
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor. Motion is adopted.
Thank you very much. And then on HB 2337, the last measure on the 1PM agenda relating to pesticides on the Advisory Committee on Pesticides, the Chair's recommendation will be to pass with proposed amendments from the Attorney General. Any discussion? Chair votes aye.
Thank you. On Measure 2337, Chair votes aye, Vice Chair votes aye, Senator Decoit.
Aye.
Senator Rhodes.
Aye.
Senator Owa.
Aye.
Chair, you have five in favor. Motion is adopted.
Thank you very much, and that concludes the 1PM agenda.